All right, welcome everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. It's a city commission meeting for January 19th. Our first order of business. Boy, it's been awhile since we've been here. I almost forgot what's next. So, we would welcome Corey Landreth with Real Life Church to lead us in the indication.
Good evening. I am Corey Landreth of the 804 South Denver and as you said, pastor at Real Life Church. We meet in the Civic Center and just love the heck out of that place. So, thanks for that. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this city and for these men and women who direct its affairs. I pray that you would give them wisdom as they plan and discernment as they contemplate the best decisions for everyone and all of the items that come before them tonight. Father, we know that you hate favoritism and that you take our treatment of the needy and helpless personally. To that end, let this group be diligent in protecting the freedoms and dignity of all people regardless of place or position. I ask you to guide them as they serve the city and her people and for your favor to rest upon us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, we'll stand and lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next thing on our, no profferments, personal appearance is next thing on our agenda for Kurt Bookout, Director of Public Utilities, annual update.
Thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to kind of talk about what's going on in the Public Utilities Department and get a review. I know there's a KU going later, so I will try and race through this. You've seen this slide before. This is sewer rates. Of course, we are an enterprise fund, so we are supported by our revenues and reflected by this water and sewer rates. Had a recent rate increase and this is the big picture. This is where we rank. We rank fifth statewide, the fifth lowest sewer rates. Water, again, a small rate increase here recently, but flat for the previous eight years. And that's where we rank in the region for water. This ranking is based on the REAP region of central Kansas, includes about nine counties. And they say we're third lowest out of 24. One of the things that is not evident when you look at these rates is a lot of these cities have conservation rates or inclining rates. And so, for instance, Wichita is the fifth lowest, but I don't know very many people that use the same amount of water winter versus summer. And so, in the summertime, as you use more water and you're in that conservation rate, your rate is not really $21.50 per thousand or for 5,000 gallons. It's a lot higher than that, but these are just the base rates, a comparison of base rates. Next stop is a water treatment plant. One of the major improvements in infrastructure and investments in infrastructure was in 2012, we finally got a generator. And my entire career had been hopeful in working on getting a generator at the water treatment plant because without that generator, if we lose power, we also can lose water if we don't have enough stored in elevated tanks around town. So, we came, in my 24 years with the city, we came very close to running out of water several times. But with this new generator, we don't have to worry about that anymore, losing electricity. It'll power the water treatment plant, refiners, pump stations, so they're not without water and also the distribution building. There were some other improvements included in that and also want to mention that the refinery contributed about $200,000 for this project because a portion of the electrical work was to connect their pumps and their switchgear to the generator. Here's more of that project, replacing 40-year-old switchgear that was in the water treatment plant. Also installed, new variable frequency drive, high-efficiency pumps and motors. Motors, the pumps were actually rebuilt a couple of years before this project. Here's a picture of the refinery, pump house. The lower picture is the pumps. We do not maintain the refinery's pumps. They maintain their own pumps. Some other infrastructure developments. The first one, 8th Street Lift Station improvements included a lot of smaller projects, but basically this was to improve 8th Street Lift Station and the Forest Main, the discharge that discharges or pumps water across the Walnut River. And you can see some of the other projects there. This is about a million-dollar project that had $400,000 in CDVG grant money. Also, water main extensions for BG Barton Solvents. West Booster Pump Station, 1.2 million to create a west pressure zone. This has been needed for, was needed for many years. The west side of town had extremely low pressure. About $600,000 for the Booster Pump Station and $600,000 in water lines to facilitate separating those pressure zones. Prison Lift Station improvements. This provided a new pumps and a trash screening system to handle the high volume of debris coming from inmates discarding things down the drains. $500,000 project with about 301,000 of forgivable essentially grant money. Star Street, $74,000 project to replace four blocks of undersized 4-inch with 6-inch mains. We used a contractor, we contracted this out and they used a bore machine to put these in. Water treatment generator, this is, yeah, this is more of the same. Let's see. North Main, Water Main Extension. This is sort of the middle school and future city growth, about $600,000, 1.5 miles of 12-inch. Parallel water line underneath the channel out at the lake. This provided redundancy for raw water transmission line coming from the lake. Recent project, the central sewer improvement. This install, this project installed three blocks of new 12-inch HDP sewer main at a cost of about $175,000. There was a bottleneck in the sewer collector system and so, this was critical to alleviating some sewer backup problems during high rain events. Finally, new water mains and developments, numerous developments over the last eight or 10 years. And then Southwest, this is the one that's getting ready to start sewer improvements to replace about 1.2 miles of undersized 6-inch sewer main, $1.2 million project with $500,000 of CDVG grant money. And I go through all these projects just to illustrate the infrastructure investments we've made using the revenue from water and sewer. Okay, efficiency improvements. Recently remodeled the lab. The lab has been the same for about 40 years and this expanded the labs, added an additional sink, much more efficient for the four operators to do their jobs in that lab. They've added some jobs. They now do a lot more testing than they used to do and they also manage the crossconnection backflip prevention control program. I'm just going to go through some new additions of equipment. We have a, the previous slide was a post-chlorine analyzer, air-actuated valves to replace 40-year-old valves in the pump room and also downstairs. Aerolators, this was a, this was kind of a happy accident. We tried aerolators to keep ice clear of the moving parts in the basins because prior to an aerolator, when it got really cold out, we'd have to actually go out with a big pry bar or something and break ice manually so that the drag system could operate. Upon installing their aerolators, we also noticed a reduction in trihalomethanes and haloacetic acids. This is a byproduct of chlorination and something that we strive to keep levels low. And so, it improved water quality. And so, here you can see ice on the basin in the aerolator keeping that north end. And again, several accidents over the years from guys out there. Matter of fact, we had a guy fall in one time while he was breaking ice. So, good safety improvement. Another recent improvement at the water plant, sodium, the addition of sodium permanganate. The sodium permanganate, sodium permanganate was trialed back in 2013 after large rain events and we had some taste noter issues. And we discovered not only did it control taste noter better, but it also lowered our dosage of coagulant. And so, we installed this large tank inside the shop along with the chemical feed equipment. And this project has about a two-year payback. One of the things that I'm really proud of our water treatment plant personnel, a lot of, a lot of facilities, when they encounter a problem, they have to go to an engineer and an engineer charges big bucks to solve the problem and then they hire a contractor to install it. One of the things that, one of the problems we'd had for years is when the temperature would get over 90 or 100 degrees in the summertime, our ammonia would start gassing off. It has a low boiling point, so it would start to turn to gas when we need to feed liquid. And so, we added a cooling system to prevent the gassing. Basically, it's a little air conditioning unit that pumps cold air into the ammonia feed units and it worked pretty slick and didn't cost a lot of money. Ways that the guys at the water plant look for efficiency things to reduce our operating costs. Bulk Water Fill Station, I just threw this up because this is, this is a, an amenity that a lot of people around El Dorado use, a lot of farmers and ranchers. We sell a lot of water through this bulk fill station. Just some quick water production facts. The main thing I want you to see here is that water, water sales, water demand has been pretty steady over the last 18 years. High years, low years are basically dependent on precipitation. And the other thing I'll point out is our, our treatment capacity is eight and a half million gallons per day. Peak demand is about seven, so we do have some, some room for growth without doing much. All of these graphs are in that, the annual report that I, that I gave you prior to the meeting. And so, if you want to look up any of this stuff, you can. This just shows where water is sold. You've got Rural Water Five and Six, the largest potable water customers. This just illustrates inside city versus outside city. In dry years, inside city sometimes edges out outside city sales.
Kurt, can you go back to that one right before that?
Uh huh.
Please. That one, that one.
Rural Water Six followed by Five. You've got Wholesale Eight, the Prison, all big customers. Rural Water Four, that, that actually, their slice of the pie will actually increase. This is a graph for 2014. They were added in 2014, so that's just a portion of the year for Rural Water Four.
Okay, thank you.
This is raw water users. And here you can see the refinery has the largest slice of the pie here, about 4.3 million gallons per day. And again, in dry years, the water plant, that, that demand will, will increase. 2014 was actually a fairly wet year. And then Augusta's usage. Their contract is for 575 million gallons. I think this year they were well under that, maybe 538 million gallons. But they have a take or pay, so they have to pay for 575 whether they use it or not. Water distribution, just some stats on, on what they take care of there. Meter replacement program. I will point out that I think Gary Taylor arrived as superintendent in 2008. Is that right?
No.
2009. So, we have, we have made some great strides in, in a lot of areas in water distribution, sewer maintenance. And one of those is meter replacement. We'll go on to the next one. This is hydrant replacement. Eventually, we'll have all the hydrants in town. All the old Ludlow hydrants were tried to standardize on Kennedy K-81 hydrants. And so, that's probably one of the reasons you see it decreasing now. I think we're finally getting caught up with hydrant replacement. This is service request. Vapor rooting, probably the single most effective thing that we've implemented to reduce sewer blockages. You can see we've ramped up doing vapor rooting. Takes about three years to cover the whole city. It's significantly reduced blockages. And in the next graph, let's see, no, I'm going to skip to root sawing. Then I'll show you a graph that illustrates the blockages, number of blockages. This is root sawing. Prior to vapor rooting, this is how you got rid of roots. And now that we have vapor rooting, I could see root sawing go to almost zero. This is service request versus actual block line. So, in the tan, you can see the, the blockages. We're showing a slight decrease in blockages and also a decrease in the, the number of callouts. The other reason I think callouts will continue to drop is the service line warranty program. Service line warranty program was implemented a couple of years ago and it's, it's been overwhelmingly successful. We have a lot of, a lot of residents, a lot of rental owners that have signed their house ups. And so, basically, for about $60 a year, it covers any blockages that you might have in your service line from the city sewer to the house. And if that line needs replaced, it pays for replacement. So, it's, and so, if people have service line warranty, that's the first call they make, not to the city of El Dorado. So. Water main replacement program. This is one of the things that Gary has, has really set out as a goal to replace all the undersized and, and leaking. We have a lot of 2-inch pipe around town and it's old and it's, it's not very reliable. We have lots of leaks on them. So, in the past five years, we've replaced over 18,000 feet of 2-inch and 4-inch pipe. So, last thing I want to hit on talking about water distribution and sewer maintenance. We're seeing a lot of, we're seeing alarming increase in sewer blockages caused by flushable wipes. These are some of them. Just because they say they're flushable, they do go down the toilet, but the problem is they don't shear or tear apart in the sewer. They're too strong. They don't shred. And so, they hang up and they continually build up. And so, I would say the majority of our sewer blockages that used to be based, are caused by tree roots and grease are now caused by these wipes. And so, this is not, not just a problem in El Dorado. It's a nationwide problem. I thought I'd throw this up here so people can see. And I think we may, we're going to put a slide on Channel Seven so that people kind of keep it in the front of their minds so that these things need to go in the trash. And this illustrates also that it's not just flushable wipes. This statistic from this study shows about 47% of the non-flushable items is actually paper towels. And so, about 32% being wipes and then other products that, that cause sewer blockages. Going to the El Dorado Wetlands and Water Reclamation Facility, completed in 2007. It cost a 10 million, capacity six MGD, and we have 25 acres of constructed wetlands. In 2008, we won the Kansas APWA Environmental Project of the Year. And then 2008, later in 2008, we won the National APWA Environmental Project of the Year. But the one I'm probably most proud of is this blue sign that Pat Fountain's holding. 2009, we won our first plan award. And the plan award is something that the Kansas Water Environment Association, which is the professional wastewater organization in Kansas. They have a competition and they go out, they have an audit team and they audit plants for safety, for procedures, for effluent quality, for maintenance, lots of different categories. They spend a whole day auditing these facilities and then they award one facility as the best-run plant in the state. And there's, I think there's three, three size categories. We're the, the medium. So, we won the award in 2009 and then we won again in 2010. And this award, BioSolids, we had to sit out in 2011 because you can only win it two years in a row. So, we sat out in 2011, but we did win the, win the best BioSolids award, which is not categorized. It's, it's based on the best in the state. So, we're competing with Wichita and Manhattan and Lawrence and all the cities. And then we turned around and won the, the plan award again in 2012 and 13. Had to sit out in 14. And so, we're eligible this next year for the 15 award, which they, they award the year in the rear. So, but very proud of this because this is a reflection of the guys that run the plant. And we have four wastewater operators and a superintendent and they do a, a super job. And it's nice to be recognized in the state as kind of dominating this category. So, proud of the guys for this. Environmental education is actually my last slide, environmental education, public outreach. We participate in a lot of programs, invite lots of people out to, groups out to fish. We do the Walnut River Water Festival, which is going on almost 20 years. And we have kids come out for that. And with that, I will take questions.
Is that PowerPoint in our book as well?
The PowerPoint isn't in the annual report, but I'm going to have it posted to the server to where you can access it. And I might just put it on our website, too.
Put it on the website. Yeah, that'd be good.
Yep.
Well, there's plenty to digest here aside from your presentations.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Kurt, thanks Kurt.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay. Everybody else, we've got, I have one of the report books that you can spend some time with. If there's any other questions, I'm sure Kurt, you would welcome that from the commission. If there's a question, is they read through that? Next on our agenda is, let me get there, public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Next on our agenda is consent agenda. Minutes from our previous meetings and appropriations. Everybody have a chance to read through those minutes, the questions associated with the minutes or the appropriations.
I know that consent agenda, we have presented the approach.
Second. Okay, so moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda would be the paving of Griffith Street from Central to Locust, Project 491.
Yes, we're asking you tonight to consider setting a public hearing for February 15th for the consideration of initiating the project of paving Griffith Street, Central to Locust, and then a portion of Locust from mine to Griffith. A petition was created on this project at the request of Sunny Stop Gas Station, interested in improvement, interested in this improvement. The city has long desired the improvement of this road as well with the Civic Center, recycle facility, our Millings Yard. Have talked to these property owners and feel it's the best interest to take the route of the city commission initiating this project and then holding a public hearing on it. So, if it passed tonight, the hearing would be set for February 15th. If the commission determines it appropriate to move forward with the project, those owners within that improvement district will give, be given 20 days to protest it. The estimated cost for the project are, total project cost is 648,000. Of that, the improvement district would be responsible for 476,000. And the city at large would be responsible for 172,000. Now, of that improvement district cost I quoted, there are five properties out of the 11 in the improvement district that are owned by the city of El Dorado. So, there's a, there's a large portion of the improvement district cost that would be borne by the city of El Dorado as well.
You don't have that broken down to know what that would be?
I could, I do have it broken down in front of me, but not totaled.
Sure. Okay. Might be a good number to know as we go, as we have the public hearing. Okay, so essentially, in lieu of petitioning all of property owners, it's something that you requested the city commission to, to move forward with.
Yeah, there is two ways that you can, the city can move forward with projects that involve improvement districts. And one is at the request of the property owners by petition or you yourself can, can get it going and hold a public hearing and make a determination. You feel it's appropriate to move forward. This project has been in our CIP scheduled this year for a number of years. And I feel it's appropriate to move forward.
What would be the improvement district? What's the boundaries of the improvement district?
The improvement district is...
You're missing it here.
It may not be your package. On the west side of Griffith, it's all of the properties that are above, above Griffith. And the same to the east. And then there are three parcels on the southern portion of Locust that are involved as well.
Okay. Any further questions from Scott?
Tabitha, what's your resolution, Tabitha?
2815.
2815?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I've moved a resolution 2815, a resolution calling for the divided forgiving notice to public hearing for advisability of making of a certain internal improvements to the city of El Dorado under a provision KSA 16-6A01 ET, sequence as amended and supplemented in providing forgiving the notice of said hearing.
Second.
Should I say he's creating a proof of Griffith Street, Project 491?
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
And I'll add, we will now be sending letters out to all those property owners. I will hold an informational meeting with them to discuss the project. I will hold an informational meeting with them to discuss the project prior to the public hearing, to try to answer any questions, or if, go through the process with them of how the initiation, how protests would work if they're interested in going that route. So that they've seen all the documents and are prepared for the public hearing to come and speak to you all.
And I guess the question I should ask before, before now, there's a lot of truck traffic on that street, so it would be not your normal residential street, right?
Correct. That's, all that, all the petition pays for is a residential street, so.
Taking your city street.
Yeah, so the city at large is the portion that's
Right.
Deeper.
Deeper, wider, more.
Wider, everything, radius, all that's at lar, is at large in the city. And I think it's, is, is this one that, is, that the city owns enough property that it can't be stopped?
Correct.
And so, and so, one of the reasons to do that on both these, well, not, not on the next one, but on this one is you have the legal authority to do it because of the way the statute is written. It couldn't be stopped by property owners. Historically, the commission has wanted to hear those property owners and take that into, into consideration. And Topeka Street's a good example. Topeka Street could have been brought up to city standards. There was, the way the statute was written and the way the petition was worked, there was no way for it to be legally stopped. The commission heard from property owners on Topeka who didn't want it. And, and so the commission voted not to do the project. And so that public hearing part and then the sending out and asking for comments gave the commission input that it's, it's one of those, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And so this is one of those examples where the city owns the bulk of the property and it probably can't be stopped. But you may hear from property owners that, that don't want to do it, and you'll, and, and of course, you'll take that into consideration during the public hearing process. And then we try to, we try to answer questions before the public hearing, so.
Okay. Move on to agenda item number four, which is a Project forty-eight, paving of Oak Street, Seventh to Twelfth.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna have to step out of this one because I have a conflict of interest with this because my trucks use Oak Street, so I'm not gonna participate in this one.
Yes, similar to the last project, a petition was circulated on this project as well. It, it was successful in getting twelve properties to sign the petition out of thirty-one. But the remaining properties were absentee owners and, and bond council had reviewed the petition and asked us to reconsider and thought probably the best path to get this project going was for you all to initiate a process on it as well. This would be the paving of Oak Street from Seventh Avenue to Twelfth Avenue. The estimated cost on the project are one million and thirty thousand dollars. Of that, the city at large responsible for close to three hundred thousand, and the improvement district, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand. Same date for the public hearing on this, February fifteenth. Again, we will send letters out prior to that meeting and, and hold a informal informational meeting with residents of the improvement district on this project as well.
Do you have any comments on this?
Yes, I do. And I didn't want to make them when the public, when it was allowed to, because I thought this was a specific subject.
Yeah, I don't know that we have, I mean, I think our process saves those comments for public, public hearing unless the commission would like to hear Mr. Hernandez speak tonight. For the commission.
I don't have a problem with speaking.
If you have some comments you'd like to make, you're welcome to.
Well, that, that street, Oak Street.
Come up here, Mr. Hernandez, please.
Oak Street seems to have quite a history of do's and don'ts. I don't know if Mr. Badway was on the commission or not. I don't think so. When the two homes were put on the west side of Oak Street, there on the, what is it, the nine hundred block?
I don't remember.
Your Flint Hills service, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. At that, at that time, it was refused several times because the people and also those two churches that were in each corner were concerned about it being paved and gutted and taxes going up too far on it. And so at that time, it was promised that they would never bring that up, and if, and if it was brought up, they would be opposed to it. And so that's finally the reason that that, the community stopped objecting to those homes going out. Because they said the only thing that they were gonna seek to pay was their driveways. And that, you know, we'd have an objection because that's their property, and also into the bar pit that was along there. Because some were concerned about the drainage and blockage and this kind of thing. I think Herb remembers a lot of that. And at that time, they said that those would never be... And then, there was a big question about the big transports. I don't know if Coke still owns that subsidiary there that's got the storage tanks right south of the tracks. Because they come and pull up Twelfth and go, I mean, on tenth, on Tenth, and pull up across the railroad tracks and go right on Oak.
I'm the plant manager, I'm gonna come back into this commission meeting to talk about that. I am the plant manager of that plant there.
Uh-huh.
And we will pay our fair share for that road to go through there.
Okay.
I have authority to tell you that, that we will pay our portion.
Okay, because I was on several committees that went to visit when they increased the capacity. Because it wasn't that big of a plant, they didn't have that many trucks going at that time. And then they increased the capacity. And so I went to meet with them, and that's when I found out it was one of Coke's subsidiaries. And they said never to worry about it because they would maintain that road because it was the trucks that were going out to Twelfth. I don't know how many trucks go through there. I know at times it's as few as six, and sometimes it's quite a few more. So it's not a consistent, you know, every day so many trucks are going through there. So, and I haven't counted in the last couple of years because I wasn't that well at that, I'm gonna help last summer, and I just stayed home. But, you know, that's where I was concerned.
That is a designated truck route, it has been that way.
It's been for years. Well, they dedicated that when they decided that Tenth Street was not a good street because they would end up in Maine. And that way would put them the furthest away from Maine. And the only people that objected, other than I myself and several others along there, and then we went along with it, was actually, believe it or not, was the high school area way up there north. And I don't know how that was resolved. And, and the others that, that said something about it was, what were you gonna do? I'm trying to think of a street. Right, is it south of Grandview? Or right around in Grandview, in that area where it floods when it rains quite a bit, they'd used to flood clear across there. And I know at one time even north of there, I think it was north of there where we lost a young student whose car was taken off by the swift water and ended up in the culvert. And I don't know, but we haven't had that much rain since. But that was the other thing that some of the truckers said, we just won't go through there if it's that much water.
No, we got a different route that we'd move.
Right, mm-hmm.
But there's too much water.
Because at that time, they were also very strongly talking about extending McCullough and Nandering and Meeting out there by the turnpike, by Boyer Road. And that was totally forgotten about because that would have been a whole new, because they were talking that about being a better bypass for the trucks. Yeah, for the trucks.
And if you look at this, where they say they're gonna spend the three hundred thousand dollars, that's for the truck route, for the truck route itself that goes through there. That's what the three hundred thousand dollars is for. It comes off the one million thirty.
See, because I have several lots there, and when they raise that, it's gonna cost me quite a bit like it did on Fourth Street. Still where, you know, it's really a hard, hardship on somebody on social security.
But you got both, my plant that's operating back there, plus you got the railroad that's running through there, too.
Right. Yeah, I'm not opposed.
They're both gonna play a portion of that.
I'm not opposed to the plant at all, fact is I was favorable to it. But, you know, I, I didn't know if the route had changed, and now they were gonna use Panther, be part of the, paying part of the cost.
It's, it's been there since nineteen fifty-nine, and the city built around it, so.
Right, yeah. Well, the place that I bought, the city. Went north of it. Anyway, I sure appreciate your time, and but I'm just asking you to consider that, you know.
Yeah, all we're doing tonight is sitting in the public hearing.
Right, right. But I thought I'd come up here because the last time I would, the other point I wanna make is, I wish that the city employees that go tell you about this, you know, about, quote, the petition, were more honest. And their, you know, they get, they, they, they tend to mislead you some. The person that approached me said everybody had signed that except me. You know, from Seventh Street on north to Twelfth. Well, I called several people, and they told me, he told them the same thing, so they went ahead and signed it. And then the other person, there was two people that went ahead and signed it, the other person said he hadn't been contacted at all. Or his daughter hadn't been contacted either because they own property there. So where did they get the thing that everybody had been contacted? And I said, what about the people north of the place where I own? I said, as far as I knew, they weren't the landowners. And I said, then across the street, Catty Corner, right north of Berens. And he said, well, people that don't live in town and outside property owners, we don't care about them. And, and so. But the impression was that, you know, I was the only one that was out, but I'm not. But I'd rather that they would go ahead and just be frankly, honest with you.
Well, I appreciate that, thanks for sharing and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Scott, we will, at the public hearing, or sometime before the public hearing, each property owner will know what their estimated portion would be?
Yes, the statute only requires us to publish it in the paper, but we, we make individual valuations of what their proposed assessment is. Along with that, with the informational meeting, we'll have the map laid out, how we determine improvement district lines, break down a cost, give them a spread of, we would anticipate a twenty-year spread on the cost would give them a breakdown of what that looks like.
Just when, just a suggestion. When I carried the petition for Locust Street, and I wasn't smart enough to do this, I had to have my daughter do it for me. But she actually figured out the amortization schedule for me. I think it was based on three percent. And she's figured out a cost per thousand, and then I had everybody's, what their estimated, their, their total cost was gonna be. And I could tell them real close what their monthly payment was gonna be. And that helped me a lot when I was going door to door. Because the first thing they'd say, well, what's it gonna cost me a month? And I was able to pull my little calculator out and tell them. And it helped me tremendously when I was carrying that petition.
And I, I mean, I, I know we give them an annual, but I don't, have we, I don't think we've ever broken it down by. We've broken it down, you know, with the petition process, we kinda give them the numbers and help direct a little bit. That's more of a, a private, you know, resident transaction with other residents. But yeah, we, we provided those in the past. When, so like, when they get their letters, they're gonna get the total, it's really their share of the engineer's estimate. And it's generally lower in, when it gets all built because you have some contingencies that, but anyhow, so they'll have an idea of the total and don't, I thought we divided it by twenty so they could see it was twelve hundred a year or whatever that was. That would be easy enough to add in letter, we typically haven't put it on the notification letter of the public hearing, just a lump sum over and tell them that it would be spread over twenty years or at the commission's discretion, not to exceed twenty years.
I just had the petition with the totals for each piece of property, and then I just took that little, that number Becky gave me, and it helped me.
During the public hearing, will we, will you give a presentation, the same informational presentation that you give the property owners at that evening?
Yes, I can.
I think that would be wise for us to see the same thing that was presented to, to the property owners in your informational meetings.
In all four minutes. In the past, we've had commissioners present at those informational meetings.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, let us know when it is, if we can be there, that's, that'd be great, too.
And, and it was just, it kinda, with the commissioner setting back and taking over the role, listening in and making this more not a political issue, but more, here are the numbers, this is how we came up, and then in front of you, it's more of a...
Right.
And on this project, you're gonna bear a couple, three people that own a lot of vacant ground. And so you're, when you look at the map, or you look at the names, you're gonna have a couple of the, the, this road is gonna be a whole lot more valuable than their lots, would be my guess. And so when you, when you look at all that and you look at the map, even though there's individual lots, you have a couple property owners that own several.
Okay. And we, and, and we, and we think this has got a similar, a city could order this in rather than, the citizens will be able to petition out if that's, that can happen.
And I think that, I think that if I remember right, there was some discussion about area versus number, that we thought we about had enough signatures on the petition and to meet one of the thresholds, and it was our, our, Kim, our bond counsel, would prefer that the commission initiated, get that, initiate that comments, hear it, and then make a decision. And so, the, and I think we'll have that discussion, too, because, and if I remember right, the, the piece from Twelfth to the railroad roughly, there was a, a, the vast majority of them. And, and I think Laddie may be, Laddie I know hadn't signed yet, but I don't, but the vast majority of those, so if you, and when all those people signed, it was like, let's, let's bring the whole thing and let you all hear about it. And then, kinda like on Towanda, if you wanted to back up or break it up, then you could do that, too. The, because the, again, the industrial use. Because the, again, the industrial use needs a railroad to move that, move that freight. So, we'll, we'll give you a more in-depth story that night, and everyone that comes to either, either your, your public hearing here, to staffs, more, more, less formal environmental discussion, or, I'm not environmental, discussion about the event, informational, will get all that information.
Okay.
But you will absolutely be able to, to not approve it.
Well, and the, and the citizens along that street are still a voice?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions? I entertain a motion.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty eight sixteen.
I note that Resolution Number 28-16, a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on the advisability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the city of El Rey, Kansas, under the provisions of KSA 126801 and all, as amended and supplemented and providing for the giving of notice of said hearing.
Second.
Case removed and second. Any further discussion? Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
Approve same sign? Is it an abstention? Okay, it passes four zero with one abstention. Next item on our agenda is new business. It's been quite a while since we have met, so, any chance for the commission to, to add to the agenda here and bring up new business?
I'll go real quick. I think we're gonna, are we gonna maybe plan a work session, or did we, for the golf course to talk about that?
Yeah, I wanted you to all think about it, talk about calendars and...
Perfect.
When you wanna set it, because, yeah, I think you need to work.
And I just wanted to mention that, because I think some people might think that there was some of that discussion happening tonight, but just to let them know that we're gonna have a work session soon.
Can we set that date now?
I would. I'd love it.
Yeah.
You wanna do it next Wednesday?
I cannot next Wednesday.
Well, actually, Wednesday's just usual, but if you wanna do it next week, or maybe, we could, I mean, we actually have two more weeks, you could even do it.
Well, next Wednesday would be the 27th.
Oh, that's about it. But you don't meet today?
No, they meet the first.
Oh, the first of February? Okay.
And we can't do Thursday, because we have sports over here.
Yeah.
Tuesday would be the only day next week that I could do it.
Tuesday's the only day I could do it. It's the only day I can, next week, and, or Tuesday or Friday.
You talking the 26th?
26th or 9th. Nick, do you have a conflict?
I'll be, if that matters.
26th is fine for me.
I'm ready to talk.
Okay, Tuesday.
We'll be ready.
Four o'clock?
Week from today.
What date?
26th. And that work session may have some other things on the agenda, but we're for certain gonna have golf course discussion on that. And I guess I would anticipate that the advisory, and we got some information from the advisory board, I would anticipate that the advisory board and the staff had, golf course staff would have talked through all that, and would be able to come to us with some recommendations by that point. That would be my hope.
The only other thing I had was, maybe a thought that we can think about, and you can pass along, Kevin, you guys think it's worthy. With the parks plan, we might consider, like, identifying a few smaller projects within that, and would it be worth our while to talk to some clubs or civic organizations about maybe, I mean, we had a, not committing us to, but had a little bit of discussion and rotary about the interests of maybe wanting to be involved with, like, the Frisbee Golf Deal. I mean, I don't know what the price tag is on some of those smaller projects, but maybe that would be a way to fund some of those.
Sure. We can do that.
Just a thought in the future, when we start talking about some of that.
The, I was in Lawrence Sunday night, Monday, and on the west side of town, they have the Lawrence Rotary Walking Arboretum, and so, the Rotary Wheel on a park sign.
Well, and they were talking about doing some signage, or talking about with the Parks Plan in the meeting, and they started talking about the signs, and I think the signs, like, were these clocks that, in the end, I think were like $10,000. And I'm like, we might as well just, like, have the El Rey Rotary Frisbee Park or something. I mean, it might just be worth...
Sure.
And then, maybe the other groups in town would have interest, and maybe not, but just a thought. And that's all I had.
I don't have anything.
I'd like to dovetail on, on that a little bit. I mean, Herb, you and I have had some discussion, and I think the commission is aware of some of this, too. We talked about it in the commission meeting, might have been in the December one, about the opportunity to, and all, all the partnership opportunities that might be at that Frisbee Park, Legion, Wetlands, all of that that's together. I think, in the interest of, of opportunity, it might be wise, if the commission all agreed to go ahead and give you the, the, the direction to make contact with the Legion and, and all those partners, the college and the school district, and the green team, and see if we couldn't see what's there, and probably the, the sooner the better. The first contact, I believe, is the Legion, just to make sure that, that we're all, that that, that the support's there, as we work on their property. Is, is that, is that okay with the...
I think that's, I mean, a good place to start, to make sure the support's there.
Okay. Okay, will the commission, go ahead and, go ahead and start that. I think that's one thing that's identified in that Parks Plan, that maybe opportunity knocks, and if we could, it'd be a great thing to have done sooner rather than later. Because I think you're right, some of those things are, we talked about them being fairly achievable goals, so.
Okay, and, and I, I'm happy to do that, and I'll get those conversations started, and, and I think I agree 100%. The first contact will be a deliberate conversation with the Legion, and now that it's, now that their ground is platted, make sure that, and while I think I understand what they're thinking, I need to hear it, I guess.
You know, as I look at that plat, I also see that through the, the stadium authority, there's probably some, some land there that, that could be incorporated in this, too, so they may be at the table.
Right.
All the players are already at the table, actually, if you invite them to this.
We have yet to adopt that, right?
The plat?
No, the parks and rec plan.
We have not adopted it.
I anticipate you'll see it the end of next month.
Yeah, in February, as we were planning to...
Well, I didn't know we could be doing all this without having already said, "Okay", Jim.
Well, and I think the, what, I think these conversations, I guess in my mind, is first to make sure the Legion, a deliberate contact with the Legion about what's being discussed. They have set aside a large portion of that for water control, or flood control, or whatever, and rec. Need to hear what they're thinking about that, and, and how that coincides or coexists with our lease on that ground. And then, I'll probably talk to them, too, about those other larger-scale developments, see what they think about that, and then, and then it, then it'll come back to you. So, let's say that the first thing you do is adopt the master plan, the next thing is gonna be really getting down into the weeds about how it's gonna look and where you're gonna do stuff. And if, if your vision is that you're gonna develop the Legion property as it's, as it's outlined in that, as one option, then that'll be another conversation, and I think it'll be a conversation about buying ground. But specific to the Frisbee Park, or to the, one of the things we've asked sales tax to do is connect the bike paths to, or there's pieces of, of cart paths not there, and connect all the cart paths. Again, that's, wanna make sure that they don't have a problem with that, I guess, and, and what they're envisioning, and if, if, if they envision...
Just need to get on the same page with them before, before with other partners, and that's, I think that's, that's great, so.
So, there won't be any decision, it's gonna be more about conversations and laying groundwork. That's what I'm, that's what I think.
Yes, I, I agree. Okay. I don't have anything else for new business tonight.
Herb, have you talked more about having that wise man from Lawrence come down? I have, happy to, just, if you, if you're ready, I'm happy to have him come.
I think it'd be beneficial. I know I could probably sure use a refresher course from him, and he's, I would like...
Very enlightening. And the, and the kinda, the focus and what he, what he, what he brings that is really unique in my experience, he taught, he teaches the master's program, he's one of the professors at KU that teaches city managers. He also was an elected official in Lawrence, who have a commission, former government, and so, during his eight years on the city commission in Lawrence, he also served as mayor twice. And so, he brings, he understands how staff looks at the world, and he understands how electeds look at the world, and how we talk about the world, and we're often speaking different languages, and so, the role of, the role of the city manager traditionally and staff is to take the, this talk that we use internally, and turn it into layman's language that you and the public can understand. And so, having a conversation about that, so that we understand how you look at the world, and you understand how we look at the world, and that it, there is absolutely friction, and it's, and it's by design, and it's, it's part of democracy, and, and, and so, you don't, if someone doesn't talk about it, you don't think of it that way. And so, it's been beneficial, I think, to staff and commissions in the past, and especially with so many new people.
Yep. I would agree, I mean, we've had this, kinda kicked this around before, and I'm...
I'll ask him.
Anything else, Nick?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to the next item, which is the city managers' report.
I just wanted to bring the commission up to date on a couple things, and, and the community on one. Last week, we kinda had a rash of stolen vehicles one morning. I think, we think it was one person just stealing cars that were warming up and driving it to the next car. I don't know if they improved models as they went or what, but I'm not sure, they just weren't needed a ride home and stole cars to do it. Don't think it's endemic problem, I think it was someone needing to ride home, but it is, I just tell everyone to, if you're warming your car up, lock the door, and don't make it easy for people to steal your car. Wanted to let you know that the next sales tax committee meeting is February 9th at You've heard a lot about grants tonight. We received notification today that our moderate-income housing grant was approved by the state, and so, we're gonna have some more housing built in the core part of our community, and so, that's, we've got that note just today, so that's a good thing. And I wanted to let everyone know, too, the, I think Kurt touched on it, we're out working on the block grant for the sewers down south, so you'll have people knocking on your door if you're in it, and we will do work in people's yards on this project, and so, besides city improvements, there's gonna be public dollars spent on private, too, because of the nature of this grant. And so, there will be a lot of work going on, and, I mean, I think you're managing, aren't you?
Yeah, it, the work is basically from Race Street West to Grand Park, and north of There is about a mile, close to a mile and a half, I think, maybe a mile and a quarter, six-inch pipe that's getting burst, and new eight-inch lines being put in place. Well, part of that process is we'll have to go to each individual sewer tap of each property owner and replace that. Very older neighborhood, backyards fenced, sheds, animals, so lots of issues, and trying the best we can with Gary's staff, and, and our contractor, and then my staff out inspecting, talking to those property owners, making them aware of what's going on, and, but it'll be a huge improvement. That neighborhood's had a lot of issues over the years, and, and, and part of that, if we find a completely failed service line, we'll go ahead and fix that up, and, and, and being able to look at all those service lines as well, if it's a questionable service line, and, and we get eyes on it, we can introduce those property owners and say, "Hey, you might consider those service line warranties, you might have an issue in a few years." So hopefully, we'll really tighten up our sewer infrastructure in that neighborhood, reduce inflow and infiltration, reduce blockages in the basements and homes, and it'll just be an overall great project.
So that's why they equipped it in Grand Park, right?
Yeah.
And some people call me and ask me if you really go back through where you already built the new road and tear it all up.
There, you, you will see a sewer project happening on, on Towanda Avenue, just on the west side of Constant Creek, not Constant Creek, but the drainage, the east drainage to Constant Creek, there's a sewer line, little extension left to complete on that. That's a separate issue from this project. Contractor has around 90 days to get this completed, and that's 90 working days, so regular business hours, good weather, probably looking sometime into May for completion and wrap up on that.
We don't anticipate tearing up the new Towanda Street with either one of them?
No, no, with either one, no.
It was a headache.
Yeah, I can imagine, it's true. Okay.
That's all I had, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next on our agi, item on our agenda is executive session, and it's, it has legal matters relating to non-elected personnel. I think I'd like to also add, I mean, there's a couple of legal matters that, that, that I think we need a quick little update on, and, and Herb, I don't know whether I, I didn't get a chance to speak with you on that, but Jim, I did speak a little bit with him on it. So, legal, legal matters to non-elected personnel, and I'd like to add to this executive session a little bit of just legal matters in general.
Mayor Haines, the motion is for legal matters and matters.
And matters.
So you're set.
I, I missed that, okay.
You're already, you're set.
Thank you. I, I guess I need to read it a little more carefully. So we're set. Thank you for the clarification. So we're set, thank you for the clarification.
How much time do you want? What do you wanna start with?
Why don't we start with a half hour?
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and matters relating to non-elected personnel, and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting in the city commission room at,
Ten after?
eight, ten.
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second, um, home favorites, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, we'll recess into executive session, thank you.